I'm gonna jump over to the site plan here. This site is located two hundred, you can see that the two acres here. That would be one of the extraction points or dugout areas. The mining ordinance calls for a minimum of two hundred feet, which this does achieve. But noting that this property owner immediately to the south has expressed some concerns with the, with their well system and how would that be impacted here? As well as, you know, the visibility aspect, you know, there's no... I didn't see that there's a, the topsoil berm that's reflected in the other areas here is not reflected in this section here. I think that's probably pretty readily addressed by the applicant. But I am concerned with the concerns that were raised regarding the potential impacts for the well. And, you know, if this mining operation draws down water, is it gonna negatively impact this neighbor or other neighbors in the area? I won't speak for them. If they're in attendance, I'll certainly give them the opportunity to do so themselves. But I, at this point, we'll give the applicant an option to perhaps expound on that too. I emailed them yesterday with those questions and asked if they could perhaps bring some clarity to that tonight. So I think as of this moment, my recommendation would be for tabling that we can discuss further or work through some of those issues. I think that's gonna be likely, but I'll allow for the public folks in attendance to bring up any concerns or expand on what I mentioned from them. And then as well as for the applicant to have an opportunity to respond. That would conclude my report for the time being.
Thank you for your time, John, in the background. It is a public hearing. Does anybody wanna speak up? Please come up and state your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Kayla Waldock. I live at ninety-one thirty-four Conner Road, one thirty-eight. Mine is the resident that he's referring to about being within two hundred feet of the gravel pit. I have a list of concerns here, one of them being the significant negative impact it's gonna have on the value of our house. It shows that a gravel pit within a half a mile of a property typically will decrease the value of our land by twenty-five percent. This gravel pit is proposed to be within two hundred feet of our house and very visible from our house. I have included some pictures of inside my house and I will be able to view this gravel pit, including all of the equipment located in that from my kitchen window. To allow a neighbor or another individual to knowingly profit at the expense of us and the property of our value is really disappointing. If water is used, which is mentioned that there'll be a wash plant as part of this gravel pit, it'll have a significant negative impact on our water availability. Water is very difficult to obtain in our area and wells are typically needed to be drilled fairly deep. We already experienced a low water supply as a result of various wash plants in the areas. There is a couple of neighbors here who also experience low water pressure and supply, particularly in the summers. We currently, with our current well, already have difficulty filling a four-hundred gallon pool without our well running dry, which is a new thing as a result of the Kramer plant opening up across ninety-four. Should they use any water within this gravel pit, it will be very likely that we will not have water to continue living in our house. We did speak with Steve from Trout Wells regarding our current well and the cost of drilling a deeper well. He said it will likely cost us upwards of six thousand dollars. However, it'll be very unlikely that we will be able to find water at a deeper location on our property, given the size and the ground makeup of our property. We also have concerns regarding the safety of our children. My children are already not allowed to play in the front yard because of the condition of one thirty-eight and the large trucks driving by. They are throwing dirt and rocks into our front yard, putting our kids at risk, so they're having to play in the backyard. And now we're suggesting putting a gravel pit in our backyard with large equipment, trucks, noise, people right where my kids are playing or nearby. We only own a point-seven acre lot, giving us no alternative place for our children to play. The noise level of these diesel trucks and equipment running twelve-hour day in close proximity to our house is of high concern to us. Just with the large number of trucks driving by and one thirty-eight, we cannot carry on a conversation in our front yard, so we have to go to our backyard. And now we're proposing to have large diesel equipment running in our backyard, which will prevent us from carrying on a conversation in our backyard. This is within city limits that we'd allow this type of noise to happen and it will greatly impact our quality of life at our house. The dust produced by hauling trucks is a concern. I know they did address that they would spray to decrease dust in the area. However, spraying would use water, which is a concern to us. We did have some spraying that happened this past summer that they brought up. They live across the street from us, from the trucks hauling on their gravel road. And it really only decreased the dust for about forty minutes and then the dust came right back 'cause that water dried up pretty quick. The destruction of Conner Road, one thirty-eight is a big concern to multiple of us in the area. It already has received a lot of damage as a result of the trucks going by. There's significant potholes and large chunks of pavement missing. This spring, they did fill the potholes with gravel mixture, but that gravel mixture is already coming back up and that's what's being thrown onto our yards. Adding additional trucks to this road is only gonna decimate the road further and increase damage to our cars or property. I did include some pictures of what the current road looks like just in front of our house. I do appreciate you guys' letting us talk. We appreciate the Andermans as neighbors. They've been great, but the addition of this gravel pit will really cause us harm. Both financial harm, we kind of did some number crunching. It looks like it'll be about a thirty-eight thousand dollar hit to us in result of having to do a new well and the property value decrease. It resulted just a decrease in quality of life. I mean, having this going on in our backyard for the next twenty years sounds awful. Having our children not have a place to play because there's construction happening in our backyard is not what we signed up for when we bought this property. I think that's what it... There is a couple of other people from the area who are also here. Jeannie here, she lives just down the road and her property butts up on the backside of where this is recommended. And then Junior here lives across the street and his concerns related to the traffic and noise and destruction to Conner Road, one thirty-eight. Do you have those pictures you wanna put up or do you want me to?
I have printed off and supplied them to the planning questioner so they have them in front of them tonight.
Yeah, I mean, in this picture, it doesn't look like it's that close to our house, but when you look out our back window, where this is proposed to be is in perfect line of sight of my house. Two hundred feet is not very far at all. It is really close, especially when you figure out how small our lot is and where we have to go to get away from this. There's not gonna be a place to go.
I wouldn't know that there is a requirement for the berming from adjacent properties. So I don't think that's reflected on the site plan, but at a minimum, there would have to be the, some sort of topsoil berm that would be brought up. I don't, that doesn't address all your concerns, but that is something that would be required in any case.
How high would that berm be?
It's, the ordinance is kinda loose on that. It says it has to be tall enough to shield it from view from adjacent properties.
Because it did mention having fifty-foot piles of dirt. And so I imagine that berm would have to be a decent height to block the view from our house.
Yep, I would imagine so. And the applicant would have an opportunity here, once folks are done, to respond with some of that information. That's, you know, I haven't had a ton of discussions since it has all come up so quickly with them. Hence, my, you know, my thought that I would recommend tabling until we could at least give them an opportunity to respond and see if these are some issues that could be potentially worked through. But that's, that's kind of the rub of the area. It is agricultural, rural, residential in nature. You get that allowance, but at the same time, the ordinance does allow for the mining type uses when they meet certain criteria. And this is one of those situations where they're looking to do that. And you're just really in probably the absolutely most affected spot you possibly could be at your residence there.
Yeah, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Speak your name and your address, please.
Harold Snyder, ninety-one thirty-seven Conner Road, one thirty-eight. I've got solar panels on two sides of my house, which you guys approved and gave permits for. Now you're gonna put a gravel pit right next to these solar panels, so they'll be... I mean, it's gonna affect their performance and everything else. I mean, I, someone is not on top of things that are going on here. So I just, I can't see that working when you've got two things that are gonna fight each other besides everything else that she just mentioned.
I'm sorry, I don't follow. You say that the gravel pit would...
The dust from the gravel pit would fog over the solar panels, so they're not gonna be effective unless somebody's gonna go out there and wash them every day.
Well, that's not under the purview of the city. That's, that's not a city project, the solar panels aren't. It's a valid concern perhaps, but it's really not our prerogative to make sure the solar panels are clean. You know, if they wanna be sure they're clean, that's them.
No, but I'm just saying they're there now because you approved it, let it put them there.
Well, I think we needed more people to come out against them in the time that was passed, but that's neither here nor there.
Okay.
Anybody else with any comments? Please come up to the mic.
My name is Chuck Andrews. I'm the project manager and applicant for William D. Saponiac. I'd like to first address your concerns. We, we don't have any plans in that two-acre parcel to do any washing. There's just a very limited resource there. It's basically about the size of this room and then everything around it is not usable. So if that is a high concern, we can amend the application to take that two-acre parcel off the permit. That's not a problem for us. But if you move down farther, down your driveway, there's the actual MinDOT pit, three hundred yards from your residence there that's been there. So I don't know when you bought your house, but that pit's been there since the sixties.
It wasn't in use the whole time.
Right, but anytime it could be, so...
Yeah, we're experiencing that right now and it's not pleasant.
So people are hauling out of there right now. I don't know that or not, but I don't know what the home value effect would be or wouldn't be. But that whole area, pretty much built twenty-three and ninety-four there. The gravel is only where it is in the world. So that is an escar that runs next to the river where the gravel is. So if you scroll closer down to one thirty-eight...
You wanna go up or...
Yep, there you go, up.
Okay.
So that eleven-acre track, I call it the east side. I'm not sure if my directions are correct or not. But that's where we'd like to start. So we wanna basically start down there, take five or six feet of gravel off the existing ground and make a pile of road gravel down there. And then go ahead and start digging in the water. We're not gonna pump the water dry by any means. That's all we're gonna do is we're gonna reach down, dig it out, throw it up, reach down, dig it up, throw it up. In a wash plant, just so you are familiar with the wash plant, it's a continuous circulation of the same water. So we build temporary ponds. Now, they're what, five hundred by five hundred? And one has sludge and one has fresh water and they just cycle back and forth, back and forth. So I don't see the negative impact of groundwater at all affecting any of the homes here. I'm not sure what the neighbors do as far as other contractors, but that's not our intent to dry the whole area out and mine down three hundred feet.
Well, we're only fifty feet down with our current well, as are neighbors.
Right, but like I said, we're not, we're not gonna be pumping the water dry at any point. We're gonna take up a small volume of water, we're gonna bring it up and we're just gonna recycle that water back and forth. So I'm not, I can understand where you might be misinformed of what's gonna happen down here, but this is a fairly small operation. This isn't like a Semstone or a Martin Marietta. This is just a pit to fill the needs of the contractors that don't wanna really buy from them and don't have good relationships with them. So it's a small operation. It's not a vast commercial operation. So I wanted to make that point. And then we're just going, that eleven acres over there, just so you know, is probably roughly three years worth of supply. And then as we move across, we'll just move directly across the road and that's roughly about the same, three to six years. And the restoration is intended for house lots. I'm not sure if water is included in ten acres for a lot or not. We can figure that part out. But we're gonna have a fairly substantial, probably an acre area, and then they'll have water all the way around it. Other berms will be pushed back in and sloped. So it would look nice.
And just to note, for, you're probably not familiar with this. You wouldn't have reason to be. So it's, it's no fault of yours, but, you know, future development in this area, there is city sewer and water on the property that's to the east of that eleven-acre parcel. So it's on the opposite side, but the city's more than likely gonna require anything, you know, that close. Is, if there's a couple of parcel development, they're gonna have to likely look at extending and connecting that. So the, you know, option for well septic there might be kinda moot, just aside.
And if, if traffic is a concern, we can just head out towards Semstone, back up twenty-three, or head out here and up one twenty-one through Saint Joe to seventy-five. We don't have to come out past your house. It's not a big deal for the volume and the customers that we service to write an addendum to this permit for us to exit this way. Avoid all the trucks, all the dust. And the dust is, could be a concern. But we're regulated by MSHA and OSHA, so they actually come out to the plant with air monitors and attach them to the guys. And a guy sits in a truck for literally eight hours and he sits outside the truck to collect the dust, see how much dust is out there. If it is a concern, we could just use calcium chloride on the roads when we're hauling. It's a very short span. If you use that field entrance, the pit is literally gonna be from, the pile will be from here to the end of your parking lot. So that three hundred, hundred-foot distance is all that area that will create the dust.
Chuck, could you maybe elaborate a little bit? I know in your application, you mentioned that this, this isn't intended to be a continuous operation, you know, seven days a week, all summer, all fall. It's somewhat sporadic. Can you maybe speak to that a little bit?
Sure, yeah. We have several gravel pits in Stearns County. And like I said, we're a family-owned business. We just cater to the small contractors that come in. We provide a service for them where they can maybe get a job 'cause we gave them a better price than the neighbor. So it's a, it's like a twenty, twenty-five day average summer where it's kind of a heavy, heavy activity in some of our pits. So if we came in there and we crushed, it would literally be three weeks. At the most, we'd be out of there. And then our customers would come in sporadically. They might haul heavy for two weeks. They might lay off for a couple of weeks and then, and back and forth type of situation. Typically, in road construction, the big volume projects is what creates all the noise and the dust. And, and there's not a lot of that in Wade Park or Saint Joe or Saint Cloud area. I know they just resurfaced seventy-five last year. And I'm sure you're gonna do something with one thirty-eight sooner than later, or Stearns County well, if you get enough complaints there. Those are the projects that create, create the havoc for two or three weeks and then everything settles down and it's over. So that, those are the customers that we cater to. I guess I really didn't have anything else unless I didn't answer anybody's question.
Are your intentions to cross one thirty-eight too and come on the other side of the road?
Could you be more specific?
Sir, sir, if you could come to the, back to the mic, we tried to get this all on tape so we can get it in records later.
Across one thirty-eight away from the river?
The old mine, Chuck.
The old mine?
We'd be alongside of that.
Could you show me on there so I'd answer the question correctly?
What am I looking for here?
The wooded area to the south there, south and...
The triangle that's across from one twenty-one.
Might have been that, yeah. Basically adjoining with your sander property. Right there.
I know.
Right now, there's the horse farm there.
Correct, yep.
And the two houses across the road.
Mm-hmm.
That land, is that part of the land you're gonna acquire?
No.
It isn't, so that won't be gravel pit as far as you know.
Not at this time, nope, nope.
Anything, if they have ownership of any additional property and they wanted to expand this at some point, it would have to go through the same process again. Yeah, yeah, you can't expand it without coming back and going through the same process again.
I'm not, I'm not quite sure what tabling, the discussion for another meeting will accomplish at this point. I would like you to vote for it and vote yes. I turned this application in in April and I'm not sure why the DNR got it less than thirty days before the meeting. If that needed to be done, it probably should have been done by now. Or you could make an addendum to the permit that that has to come in and prove for us to, to use the property. We've been waiting quite a long time to see if this could take fruition. And we'd like to start on it possibly end August, first part of September. We wanna be neighborly as possible and we want you to know that. So if you do have any concerns, if it does get approved, I wanna make sure that you just call. We'll just come out and take care of it. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I just wanna clarify that, you know, we may have had some of the materials in the last few months, but we, I don't know if there's miscommunication or what the case was, but we processed this when we, when we got the, you know, the formal application for everything. So that, that's, that's the process.
Joe White, one oh four nine two hundred thirty-fifth Street in Kimball. I'm the owner of a BH aggregate. I actually leased this property from Ann and I'm working with Saponiacs to do the mining and the processing of the property. But I just wanna take a minute to talk about gravel in general. We don't have a lot of reserves left in the state of Minnesota, especially in our metro areas and Wade Park being one of them. City of Wade Park uses over a half a million yards of aggregate a year. That aggregate has to come from somewhere. When this aggregate's gone, it's gonna come from locations further away. It's still gonna come past your house. When people talk about truck traffic, truck traffic isn't gonna increase. Truck traffic is what it is. If a half million yards of aggregate is needed in that area, that truck traffic's gonna be delivering a half a million yards, whether it's coming from this property, property down the road, Martin Marietta. Martin Marietta delivers two-point-three million tons a year. That, a lot of that aggregate goes all the way down to the metro area. Those trucks are going by thousands of homes. One thing, when you talk about trucking, this business isn't fun, believe me, but you're talking about truckers that do this for a living. This is their professional business. They're truck drivers. And I think when you look at the accident level of truck drivers, you don't hear of a lot of truck drivers that get in accidents hauling gravel, especially in the city of Wade Park. You've got a pretty big replication right next door here of an awful lot of trucks that go through this town. It's a hundred thousand trucks that come out of that quarry in a year, a hundred thousand. This facility, probably about two thousand trucks a year would be coming out of there. The beauty of this is, again, there's only so much aggregate needed in this specific area at this time. So if it's coming out of the Saponiac project, or it's coming out of the Kramer project, or it's coming out of the undersander project, or the MinDOT pit that's located across the street from your home, it's still gonna be the same amount of aggregate. So it's only gonna come out of one of those pits. They're not all gonna do a half a million yards a year. There's no demand for that at this point. So you're not changing the volumes. You're not changing the truck traffic. Honestly, in a sense, the majority of this aggregate is probably gonna go into town. So in your folks' situation, this is gonna be less traffic going by you versus the trucks coming from, say, the Kramer facility. But regardless, it is gonna come from somewhere. Ann couldn't be here this evening, so I was gonna speak a little bit about Ann and her family. And her mother passed away a couple of years ago, been there over seventy-five years. Ann was born and raised on that property. You folks are new to the area. I don't know how long you've been around there, but probably a few years, I would imagine, correct? Imagine the use and the change of things and the progress that's happened in this area in the time that that family's lived there. They've got a beautiful horse farm. And this is an opportunity for Ann to make a little income off of this aggregate to be able to support her hobby that doesn't generate enough money to pay for itself. This is her love, her life love. Her mother left her this farm because she's the horse, horse daughter out of the family and she wants to continue her dream. There's not much dream left because everything's growing around it. But you have an area here that is full of gravel. We have to look at using, utilizing our resources. The end use of this is gonna be a beautiful lake property that's gonna only increase the value of your property. You're surrounded by gravel pits, so in terms of decreasing the value of your property twenty-five percent, it didn't decrease it when you bought it, I assume. Nothing's really changed. You have gravel pits all around you. That MinDOT pit has an excess of three million yards of material in it. It's gonna come out of there at some point. MinDOT allows that pit to be used by any contractor for any project that's a MinDOT project. We can go in there anytime. Doesn't require a permit. It's already there. So the gravel's in this area. We didn't put it there. Mother Nature did, unfortunately. We don't get to pick a spot that's industrial or commercial or anything along those lines. We have to work with what Mother Nature provided. This is a huge opportunity for not only City of St. Wade Park, but the county of Stearns County to have the availability of these aggregate resources that benefits all of us in terms of tax dollars. It's never fun to have it next to your house. I happen to love gravel pits. I've been doing this for thirty years. I've permitted probably three, four hundred gravel pits in my day. I take my kids to gravel pit every day. It's the funnest place in the world to play. I don't feel any safety concerns. You're working with professionals. This is what they do. So one thing, when you talked about road repairs, there is an aggregate tax that's charged on every gravel pit. This particular pit is gonna generate over three hundred thousand dollars in aggregate tax that is go back to the local community to use for road repairs. So all of those dollars are part of the compensation for using those roads besides the fact that the public roads are used for transportation of every commodity to get to where its end location is. So I understand they're not fun. I think when you look at mining nowadays compared to what you saw even in the undersander property that's an older mine, people are a lot more respectful in this business. We've been educated a lot over the years and doing a lot better job of maintaining a nice, clean operation, building berms, planting trees, making a beautiful... You guys are young, maybe you're gonna stay in at home for a lot of years. You could have a lake right next door to you. It's gonna be a beautiful opportunity for your family to have that view when it's done. Unfortunately, these things do take some time. As Chuck spoke about, that two acres, even if it's mined, it seems like it's right there, but really that aggregate's gonna get processed on the other side of Ann's farm. So in terms of equipment, there's very little equipment that would be next to you. Two acres can be mined rather quickly and that material would be stockpiled on the other side, so you're not gonna see that part of it. It's just simply digging it out of the ground and putting it through the processing equipment and getting it in a stockpile. So I just wanted to talk about that in general, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Motion to close public hearing?
Motion.
Check it.
Motion of second to close public hearing. All in favor, sing us by an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Public hearing closed at eight eleven. Commissioners, have any discussions?
I would, Chair Jansky, I would note you still have, um, you, you're not obligated to take my, my recommendation, one way or another, certainly. Uh, there is a list of proposed, uh, conditions of approval if you choose to go that route and put it to the city council. I, I would like to see, I, I think that Mr. Andrews did a good job of explaining some of the, the mechanics of the, how the water works and cycles through. Uh, I, I would like to see maybe some, uh, expounding on that, that we can, that we can provide for the neighbors and, and maybe some gear, some option to, you know, take that mining of that small area that was referenced that uh, was equated to the size of this room out of the picture, and get that topsoil berm and some proposed heights on that, and maybe see if we could get this to a more comfortable point for them. Again, same as with the earlier request, I, I don't think there's necessarily a situation that's gonna make everyone extremely happy, but maybe we get it to a point where they're more comfortable with it. I, I don't wanna put words in your mouths, but, um, I, uh, same situation that this, this project, I don't think it's viable to deny it right now or recommend to deny it, but, uh, I, I, I'm not comfortable moving forward with it just yet either. And i- if I were aware of these concerns earlier, I, we would address them earlier, but that's why we go through this process.
I guess I'd like to see more on birmingham and stuff down towards the house, but I guess I could see table in it so they can discuss it and come up with all parties and somewhat agree.
Mr. Chair, I, I agree, um, and I do wanna do something more about that and addressing the two acres there. Maybe if you can put that in the language, in the condition somehow. And also, I wanted to address something about the hours of operation, uh, when you're talking about, uh, limited to daylight hours. That can be quite a stretch, especially in the summer, and we might wanna do something about that to shorten that up in the evening on some of the.
Yeah, i- it's always challenging with a, with anything like this, and I'm sure the applicants would, would, uh, concur as, because it's so driven by, by the specific need of that particular project at that particular moment, that it becomes really difficult to, to set the fine hours that, you know, th- that works, it does work great for a, a, a run-of-the-mill business, you know, a storefront, that sort of thing, but where it's something that's supplying construction activity that is so weather-dependent, so season-dependent, it, 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 it's a great, it is a gr- a great idea, d- don't get me wrong, but it, it's really hard to, to put that in and, and have it be something that they can actually meet and function with their business model. We, we, I'm happy to evaluate and see if we can do something there, but it is.
Right, uh, well, the thing is just that it's kind of arbitrary.
Yeah.
And, and, and who decides when it's daylight or not, really? I mean, I mean, you know, and you got a, a half hour window in between here or there or whatever, and, and, and daylight in, in July can be nine o'clock, whereas, uh, you know, that's, that's, uh, that's local residents precious evening time with their, you know, and, uh, they don't wanna, I, now granted, I do realize that this is, of course, gonna be quieter um, than some of these other operations that we deal with out in Stearns County, uh, where it is a much bigger issue. But even on the county level, we're able to say you got to close that down at seven o'clock, twelve hours a day, something like that. So, I, I just appreciate something towards that effect.
Commissioners, uh, motion on tabling it, or what direction would you like to go at this point, discussion?
I guess I kinda struggle with the whole idea of tabling this one too, but the, for the fact that, uh, the applicants, you know, and they're a victim of COVID, I guess, because things didn't get processed and didn't get going and so on and so forth. There aren't kind of a timeline too, and I struggle with that too. I mean, we're pushing them back a month, and if they're talking about trying to get going end of August, we're middle of August before we're talking to them again. But I don't know, my thoughts.
I'm in agreeance with Bob on that. I'm struggling both ways too. I understand the, uh, two acre concern. There's been a conversation today with removing it, uh, from the picture. If that would satisfy the neighbor next door, you know, fine. Uh, but we get, we're kinda struggling with two acres of land to go forward or not. And that's where I'm, I'm kinda balancing it right now in my head, trying to figure out the best option.
You could, i- if there was a desire to, try to recommend approval, you know, you could, uh, recommend, uh, added condition that that, that depicted site, uh, is removed from the equation or reduced. Uh, and then that the birmingham appropriate, I mean, there's already a condition in there that, that requires the, the birmingham. It's basically to staff satisfaction. I, I, I guess it's, uh, it's, it's at your discretion. I, I just don't wanna shorten. I, I recognize the, the rights of the property order to pursue this, and I recognize that, you know, the, the applicants wanna try and get going here, and that they, they probably do run a, a tight operation as far as I've ever heard or I'm aware, but, you know, we, we do have a, an order right there that's got, got some concerns, and frankly, they're living there and these folks aren't.
John, is there any way we could, uh, go ahead with part of the order, like to the east of where they wanna start? Give them some type of guideline to go with that, and then figure out the west side? They wanted to start the eleven acres to the east of one twenty-one.
I mean, if, you would have to put it to them, I, judging by the, the way Mr. Andrews is looking, I don't know that that really works for them, but they can comment on that if they choose.
Table the, table the west side for the month or until they come up with, pulling that two acres and putting a berm up or something?
You, you, you can't partially approve a component of the property, it's, yeah, unless they would, unless they would withdraw a portion of that.
Okay, can I make a suggestion? We're, we're at a public hearing, like I said, I've done three hundred gravel bits in my day. This is where these things get worked out. We've got, I don't know how many letters you sent out to neighbors. How many letters went out for, for this meeting?
As far as a, a number?
Yeah.
I sent it to everyone within a twelve-hundred foot radius of the property.
Twenty?
No, like six?
I'm just asking, I didn't know.
No.
So, most of those people that had concerns are here tonight. So, we're talking about the two acre piece.
Mm-hmm.
If, if they're okay with that part of the equation and simply removing the two acres, you modify your conditions to, to remove that.
Yeah, I mean, our, our public hearing is closed, but in, in effort to see if this can move forward. If you wanna reopen it and put it to the neighbors and see if it's something that they're amenable to.
Public hearing closed, we can ask them the question, can we?
You could. Let's follow, follow the rules.
Can we reopen the public hearing at eight twenty?
Do you want to address that?
Yeah, I, Richard Wallock, ninety-one thirty-four County Road one thirty-eight, so I, uh, the neighbor there that's two hundred feet away, and I think if they took the two acres off, we would be a lot more comfortable. I mean, it's, our biggest concern, or our two biggest concerns were the water, and then that being two hundred feet from our backyard that we spend most of our summer in. And if they took that out, then they wouldn't be, I mean, it wouldn't be a lot less visible. If they did some birmingham, maybe put up a few trees in there, I think that would reduce the noise. We would definitely be more comfortable. I can't speak for Jeannie or. Or Harold. I mean, it would improve, I think.
I do like the idea of, of routing all the traffic the other way as well.
Mm-hmm.
We could incorporate that.
You could work with. Come on up.
All right. It's me, Chuck again. Um, yeah, like I said, if we can get this, we can get this baby pushed through here tonight. Um, just amend the application to remove the two acres and route our traffic out. But I'm bad with directions here, but what, I don't know, what is that, east?
The east.
East, yep. East of Ann eight, Ann's barn or her address there, whatever. Just the route to traffic out that way.
We, it, we can finesse that between, or between now and the, and the city council meeting, that, that's not an issue.
You've really got two options, you got North Road and one twenty-one, and you've got the East Road.
Yeah, we'd like to be able to go into St. Joe and then out, um, around the Sam, well, I think it's now Samstone, but the Samstone Pond, back out to, I believe twenty-three connects out there, yeah, yeah.
Right past EDM.
Yep, yep, yep. That works for Saponiac. For sure.
What about, what about the whole hours situation? Can you work with that if they, if they, can you work with a limi- somewhat limited amount of hours?
Yeah, I, I think we could, um, w- we could, you know, if it's, if it's a make or break for a permit, we have to take what we can get.
Well, I think that's, it's a topic of discussion.
Yep.
I think that can be discussed.
Yep.
I think if we leave it somewhat open in this, uh, in our conditions, you know, you can work.
Mr. Zabinski, we did, uh, as part of the recommended conditions of approval. Um, I did note that, uh, an option for exceptions that we could make administratively a couple of times a year. Uh, if it's, if it came down to it, if you guys are in a crunch for, you know, a, a particular project or something, and it, it needs to exceed this by, you know, the set hours by a little bit, one way or the other, that we could, we could work with that. Uh, I, I think that's fair, if you, if there is some finessing of that, but the, I just want it to be that, that there's an allowance and an option that, you know, whether it's something that I have to notify the neighbors and just say this is gonna be going on for a couple of weeks.
Just so we got some working room, you know?
Yep, yep, just to have a li- a little wiggle room, because there's, there's gonna be times, and it's probably a good thing, because like they're saying, it probably means that one of these beat-up roads is probably getting resurfaced. Uh, that, that we can give them a little bit extra and, and let them extend those hours a little bit.
Yeah, and I don't know if you guys wanna even, like, you put restrictions on the, the equipment, the crushers, that, that type of stuff, maybe a thirteen, fourteen-hour day, six to eight, seven to nine, something like that. But, um, as far as the actual trucking itself, um, I, I could see that going quite a bit later at times, that's for sure. And that's where I, I hate to get into the sticking point, but you gotta, you gotta, you know, take what you're given. There's a lot of those, I mean, fifteen, sixteen-hour days is, is pretty normal, six to nine, six to ten.
Yeah, that, that's a good point. I hadn't factored in that, you know, the trucking and the, you know, the, the portable equipment operations might not necessarily be linked.
Well, that'd be a factor then too, then at, at that point in time, you'd wanna keep the traffic going the other way.
Right.
For them.
We're addressing it at the same time.
That might be, you know, that might be the give and take to make it work.
We just wanna be flexible, and I'm, I'm happy that you opened it back up, um, so we get this thing pushed through tonight. Um, and of course, it's always contingent on Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Go wait again, I just wanna say two quick things. One, in terms of wells, there is a state law that protects the landowner with a well. If an operation dries up your well, there is a state law that protects you to get that well replaced. So, as Chuck went through, this type of operation isn't actually gonna be doing any dewatering of that level. Uh, but I just wanted to give you a comfort level that that's out there. Secondly, one thing, just in truck traffic, to be, not say you won't go the other way. If there's a delivery to a house right there, or one thirty-eight is getting built, you know, you s- you say truck traffic's gonna go the other way unless that project is right there. You just don't wanna limit yourself, and there's no sense driving them trucks ten miles around to deliver gravel five hundred feet down the road, is, is all I'm saying in terms of that part, but.
Say the trucks will go the other way within reason.
Okay, so do we have to get the specifics of the language down?
We gotta close the public hearing.
I think we should go through the conditions, or.
All right, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion to close public hearing in a second, all in favor, saying with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Close second time for eight twenty-seven.
Commissioners, did you want me to, to run line by line through the, uh, proposed conditions?
Please.
I would note that, uh, per discussion, I think we expect condition three to, to change on the, the hours of operation. Okay, here would be the, uh, the initial recommended approval, the interim use permit, uh, for a period of twenty years, subject to the following conditions. Number one, proposed use is subject to all provisions of city ordinance, section fifty-two, mining and extractive uses. Number two, interim use permit for mining shall terminate September first, two thousand forty. All mining and extraction activity must cease at that time. Reclamation activities shall be complete by September first, two thousand forty-one. Reclamation, or excuse me, renewal may occur, subject to processes established by city ordinance fifty-two, section forty-five. No tacit or inferred approval of renewal is established by granting of the initial interim use permit. Uh, number three, and this is the one that, uh, we expect to change. Uh, hours of operation are limited to daylight hours, Monday through Saturday. Limited exceptions may be made via request to city staff not to exceed eight times annually. Number four, no explosives, uh, shall be utilized. Number five, no crushing or washing activity shall occur on site. Um, is, is that one that should be, do we may wanna reconsider for your operation, or is that one okay? No crushing or washing. I just wanted to be sure I'm not putting that in there if it's something that's gonna be a sticking point.
Yeah, we have to crush them off. Is that what you asked him, right? Yeah, we've been up to crushing them off.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure, I think that I was, okay, we'll strike that, uh, number five.
Questioned that when I read it first time.
I'm sorry?
I questioned that when I read it the first time, 'cause I think that's kind of the purpose of the operation.
Yeah, that, that, that was basically reworking language from another similar request. That's, I just happened to catch it, that's my mistake. Uh, so, number five would become birmingham of sufficient height to shield view of operations from adjacent properties and roadways shall be established immediately upon project commencement, commencement and being placed by July first, two thousand twenty-one. Number six, mined areas shall adhere to those as identified by the submitted plans. And I would add to that, uh, revise to reflect the removal of that, uh, southernmost area.
Cut it down or?
Or, or reduction in size.
Southeast corner.
Yep. Number seven, a stormwater pollution prevention plan shall be submitted for review and approval and adhered to accordingly. Uh, wash racks, grates shall be implanted on site for all ingress egress points as part of the stormwater pollution prevention plan to prevent tracking of debris off property. Number eight, a traffic circulation plan shall be developed and submitted for review and approval of the city staff. Upon approval, it shall be adhered to accordingly. And I would add that would reflect the conversation tonight regarding, uh, limit, limitation of traffic, uh, southbound past the site on County Road one thirty-eight. Number nine, any debris tracked off property into, into public right of way shall be removed by the applicant immediately upon notice. Number ten, applicant is responsible for securing any additional city, county, or state permitting requirements. Number ten, applicant is responsible for securing any additional city, county, or state permitting requirements, including but not limited to requirements for environmental assessment worksheet, uh, DNR, dewatering, permitting, or county road access or use. Number eleven, applicant is responsible for coordinating with Sauk River Watershed District regarding necessary permitting or approvals necessary for plan approval and commencement. Number twelve, applicant agrees that, uh, City of Wade Park staff shall be allowed access to the site as required per ordinance and outlined in submitted project narrative. Number thirteen, reclamation plan is required per City Ordinance fifty-two, Section forty-five, at completion of work and end of interim use permit term. Upon approval of reclamation plan, reclamation and backfilling of site shall be completed using only clean, compatible fill free of debris or contamination. No construction debris, petroleum chemically impacted soils, demolition debris or waste, paving materials or other materials shall be used for reclamation or backfilling. Number fourteen, applicant shall maintain and provide record to city on dates, volumes, and sources of any fill brought into site for reclamation. Number fifteen, a performance bond, it shall be required in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars to ensure reclamation. Bond shall be submitted prior to commencement of any activity. Number sixteen, this will be last, failure to abide by any terms or conditions set forth on this interim use permit and/or applicable city ordinance or state of Minnesota law or statute shall be grounds for revocation of interim use permit.
Hey, commissioners?
A lot of verbiage is at work.
Motion?
I would move for approval of the, uh, request with the conditions as stated. Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve with conditions. All in favor, saying a aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passed with all present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your attendance and.
The anticipated city council meeting for this is still kinda TBD, but should be, uh, probably early August is what we're thinking. I'll, I'll keep you posted on, on the date once it solidifies.
Thanks a lot, Chuck, for the good presentation.
Do we have any other business, John?
Any new business or?
Uh, I, I don't have any. We'll give, maybe we'll give, uh, the folks a chance to get out here before.
Notice the project we voted on over at, uh, Marketplace Annex is in progress.
Yep.
Looks like it's gonna be really nice when they're done.
It is. It's starting to look nice.
Yeah.
I would note, uh, just, just a reminder, and Bob already mentioned that, uh, uh, next month, since we'll have at least one item coming back, I'm not aware of any other pending applications as of yet. Um, but the projected, the meeting will be,
Wednesday.
For, for August, uh, should be August twelfth for the planning commission meeting. And, and we'll bank on that at least. Uh, and I'll keep you posted as, if we have any other anticipated applications, but at least that one will circle back around. And also, I, not sure if we're still on tape or not, seeing as the, the door is closed, but, um, just a reminder to spread the word about the census. That's still ongoing, and our pounds aren't as high as we'd like them to be, so. Any, anyone you get to talk to or any chance you get in front of people, encourage them to, uh, fill out their census if they haven't already. That's all I have, and we can take it off the, off the camera now if we haven't already.
I get a motion to adjourn?
I move.
Got a motion in a second to adjourn. All in favor, saying a aye. Opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned eight thirty-six.
Maybe you don't wanna go home yet, damn it.
Thank you all.